Okay, I think we have everybody here, at least all five commissioners. Is there anyone else we should be waiting on, Tim?
No, I think we're ready, Michael.
All right. I would like to. All the. Good reading with the Urbana Parks District Board of Commissioners for the month of October 2020. And our first item of business in these COVID times is to suspend our remote attendance policy. Pursue it. On that. Zero. We can attend remotely as we are doing this evening. Do we have such a motion?
I move to temporarily suspend Urbana Park District's remote attendance policy, pursue it to the Illinois Public Act 101-0640 and allow all commissioners to attend this meeting remotely.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, which is required under the circumstances. Or reverse seniority order, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Lashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
And Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously. The next item of business is to either accept or amend the agenda for the evening. Not one suggested item is to move up to new business item A, the review and action to accept the comprehensive financial report so that our guests don't have to stay around for the entirety of the meeting. Is there a motion to amend the agenda to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Any discussion on the point? Hearing none, again, when all commissioners are attending remotely, we have to do roll call votes, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Lashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
And Nancy.
Aye.
And I also voted in the model agenda the evening.
Michael, your, your.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. I do see a square here for UPD guest. Is there anyone present in this Zoom meeting or else live at the PNO facility wishing to address the board at this time?
Michael, there's no one here at planning and operations and at one person that thought they might be coming, let us know they won't be coming tonight, but we'll try to come next month.
Okay.
I don't, so there's no one at least here that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, I do see this one square here just labeled UPD guest, so.
That's just the, that's the workstation that's set up in the per conference room in case somebody does come.
Okay. So I guess there's nobody from the public to make comment. Are there any new staff introductions to be made today?
None that we are aware of.
And last. Okay. Yeah. Well, also, also on the agenda, I do see APA-ILO, which I assume Illinois has strategic plan award. Is, is there some, something to be brought forth at this point?
Yes, we do. We have Cara Dudix here tonight. She's going to give us some information on the recent award that the UPD received for the strategic plan. She was able to participate in the award ceremony and I thought it'd be a good idea to have her come and tell us about it and maybe tell us what maybe stood out to the reviewers' mind of, of the plan. Thanks, Cara.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. So about a year ago, the board accepted our strategic plan that we had worked so hard on that had nearly a thousand individual pieces of public input. Board of Commissioners, various times we talked to you in a group and separately. And an internal steering committee worked really hard creating this strategic plan that could be something that really reflected what we needed and something that would be used moving forward. And so I went to school for urban planning and I recently was able to get my planning certification. And so I've been around the American Planning Association for about eight or 10 years now. And every year there is a call for awards for different kinds of plans. And so everyone interested in planning across the state submits various kinds of plans. And I submitted ours in the strategic plan award category. And what that asks for is it's targeted to a specific area of a community and it mentions strategic actions designed to produce change and improvement. And so in that, you know, I talked about our public input and how we intentionally made our plan usable and concise and colorful and, you know, just not bogged down with a bunch of information and data just for the sake of having a long plan. And I think as a staff group and from what board feedback we received that we were really moving in the right direction. And so I was just really proud that the nominating committee awarded us the strategic plan award from APA Illinois. And they just talked about how transferable it is to other entities. The way, you know, we use the, the system of the four planning pillars. And they really liked the implementation strategy we had where each goal and objective has next to it who's in charge of making this happen and how we know when it is completed. And overall, they really liked our, our public input in the way that we did. You know, those big graphic facilitation exercises that created the big almost pieces of artwork. When we had the prize wheel and that was drawing in kids and teens, which are usually a left out demographic. And so just overall, I feel really proud and wanted to thank everyone here too for their work on it. It really means a lot when most of the entities receiving these awards are Chicagoland and, you know, large consultants. It really means that we, we have something we should be proud of and continue working to implement the plan.
Tim, I think you muted.
Just trying to be polite. Wanted to thank Cara too. She was the principal planner for the project and did a really good job leading us through, obviously in the front end. Things are real fuzzy and loose and she was able to keep us on task and keep pulling things together, written graphically and working with all the other people contributing.
Yeah, I think one of the things that Cara didn't mention, but Tim, you, you alluded to is that this was done entirely in-house, you know, no outside consultants. For it to get an award like this at a statewide level and the comments we received really, really show the, the innovative approaches that Cara was able to work, work, work through to bring this point to reality.
Yeah, and I think to have it such a useful document is really the, the best. The best part of it. It's not good, it's not going to sit. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost like a blueprint for action. So, good job.
Yes, indeed. It's, it is gratifying to, to see that process end up in an award of this sort. Because I agree, we, I think we do have a strategic plan that we are going to be able to use actively going forward. Any other comments on this? Hearing none, let's move on then to the update report. Do we have a live update report? We certainly had a written one in our packet.
I thought this is where we're having Martin Hood.
I think we moved them to the first item under new business.
Oh, did it seem, oh, okay, because that on my agenda, that's where they're supposed to be.
Oh. Well. Ah.
We can do either, Michael, whatever you all.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm, I'm seeing that in, in blue here, that is not exactly where we made the motion to move it. However, with the, with the forbearance of, of the rest of the commissioners, I, I would be fine having us bring that forward to this point in the agenda. Are there any, any objections? Hearing none, then let's, let's. Let's move to our financial report.
I'll just do a quick intro. We have Maddie and Greg here from Martin Hood. They were our audit team for this year's audit. And you should have received the audit in your board packets along with a governance letter that is about maybe a 10-page letter that's at the front. So Greg and Maddie are going to go over the audit with you and hopefully you also received, I threw the question editor in there, so I want you guys to feel comfortable and empowered to be able to ask tough questions to the auditors and I, I warned Greg that you could put him on the spot and he'd do a great job under pressure.
All right, thank you, Katie. I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us to visit with you this evening. As Katie mentioned, my name is Greg Douglas. I'm the manager for the audit for Martin Hood. With me this evening, she's not on my screen right now. I don't know where she went. Are you still there, Maddie?
I'm still here.
Okay. With me this evening is Maddie Eisenmenger. Maddie was the in-charge auditor who planned and performed the fieldwork and drafted the report. So basically she did all the work. We're going to go over the large audit document. And we will also discuss the letter that came with the document, the letter to the board. So in our presentation, we're going to touch on some of the new material, any major differences from prior years and issues of interest to governmental boards. And then I'll talk about the letter. So I'm going to turn it over to Maddie now to talk about the audit document.
Alrighty, so the daunting audit report, which is very large, I'm going to go through it pretty quickly because there were very little changes from the prior years. And I've met with you guys for the past three years, so I know you've gotten the same spiel every time, so I figure get through it. Just touch on, like Greg mentioned, the major changes this year. So if you look starting pages, on pages 10 through 12, this is just your, the actual independent auditor's report. So this is where we tell if you're have clean financials or if they're a little funky, but as normal and as consistent with prior years, you guys got an unmodified opinion, which if you look at page 11, it's the third paragraph down. This is a clean opinion, means Katie and her team are doing their job wonderfully, which I would expect nothing less. And so that's what you want to hear. Then, so kind of going backwards, pages one through nine, these are just your, this is your introductory section. Katie kind of puts this together for you guys. We don't give an opinion on those. We also do not give an opinion on the pension and post-employment benefit schedules, which are pages 84 through 87, or the statistical schedules, which is pages 109 through the end of the report. Those are just, they're more for reference and requirements for other certain issues, but not for GASB purposes. We do for these unaudited sections, review them for reasonableness and kind of do a quick comparison to the financial statements on what we give an opinion and make sure they're consistent. And our opinion also is covers the Urbana Parks Foundation information that's included. But it's based on Russell Lee's information. Pages 13 through 26, these, this is your MDNA. This is fully prepared by Katie and her team and just kind of provides a high-level overview of your financials and other informations within the rest of the document. So if someone decides not to want to read all 100-plus pages, they can just, Katie gives a nice overview right there and they get the gist of what makes up your guys' organization. So just the basic financial statements, the exhibits, which are pages 27 through 39. No format changes, no additions from prior years, nothing really major. There's number changes, obviously, which especially this year, we would kind of expect. But you guys kind of get that information monthly, so it's probably not a huge shock in any of those changes. So if you go to page 40, pages 40 through 83 are the main bulk of the reading for this report. It's the note disclosures for the financial statements. Again, consistent with prior year formatting and everything. We did have a couple new notes and changed to a note. Note 1S, which is on page 49. This is just adopting a new GASB standard, statement number 88. Pretty much, this was one of the nice, easy adopt standards to adopt. It just changed a few wording tweaks in your debt disclosure. Did not change any adjustments to your financial numbers or anything along those lines. We really like these adoptions. Quick and painless. On page 59, we did make just a little bit of a change to your long-term debt disclosure. Really all we added is there's the premium on alternative revenue bonds. This is just amortizing the discount you guys received on the refinance of the 2010 and 2011 bill bonds. Just kind of wanted to point that out because that is a new line item this year. And it seems a little funky for a long-term debt, so just wanted to draw that to your attention. Note number 24, page 76, sorry, I'm jumping around quite a bit here. So this describes just kind of an over expenditure from your budget on the audit fund. It was only by $2,000 and some change. And it was the only fund that was over expended and the full budget itself was under expended, so it wasn't a huge concern for the audit, but we did have to bring attention to it. I also want to jump up on that same page. Footnote 22, we did add in a COVID disclosure, just I don't think anyone is going to forget about it, but just in case they jump in and see these financials, just to point it out. Nothing, no issues for you guys related to that or anything. It's just drawing attention to potential impacts moving forward. So remaining pages after the disclosures from 77 to 83, those are just taken directly out of the foundation report from Russell Lee. But starting on page 84 through 87, these are your pension and other post-employment benefit disclosures. These are, these are the three schedules that we do not provide an opinion on. They're, that's why they say unaudited at the top. And then 80, pages 88 through 107 are just individual fund breakdowns. And then page 108 is the, it's a new schedule this year, actually, I believe. Katie wanted this to be included this year. It's just the statement of bonded indebtedness. Nothing strange there or anything. And then after that, you just have that statistical section that Katie and her team prepares for readers' benefit. Like I said, really, everything was pretty consistent with prior years. Nothing major outside of the refinance when it came to auditing the financials, so. And that was great for you guys and we had plenty of information and got that done nicely. Going forward, just two quick standards that we wanted to just bring to your attention. One is GASB 68 related to fiduciary activities. This will be next year, adoption for next year. Just kind of provides additional guidance for identifying any fiduciary activities and how to report them. Not really likely to impact you guys, but just wanted to bring it up. And then the big one. The leases standard, GASB 87, it's daunting, but we'll get through it. It's three years out. It won't be adopted until fiscal year 2023 for you guys. What it does is it puts leasing, leases as assets. So it moves them from your income statement to your balance sheet if they meet certain requirements. So this, due to COVID, luckily, think, one good thing to come out of COVID, this was postponed 18 months. I know Katie and I were talking about it and we were extremely happy for that postponement, so. That, that's a big benefit. It'll give us more time to research and Katie as well, and we'll get that taken care of come that time. That's really all I've got on the audit report. I'm going to push it to Doug to, or sorry, Craig. I'm going to push it to Greg to go over the letter that's included with the report. And kind of what's left on our end, and then you guys can push it back for any questions.
Okay, thanks, Maddie. So I'm going to talk about the post-governance letter, which is a separate letter, should be on our letterhead like this. This letter discusses how the audit went operationally. Beginning on the first page there, under the significant audit matters. We talk about the GASB 88 that was adopted this year and as Maddie noted, didn't have a major impact on UPD. At the bottom of that page, we begin talking about estimates and that continues on to the next page. There are four major estimates in your financial statements this year. The allowance for uncollectible property taxes, the estimate of the useful lives of capital assets, the pension liability and the post-employment benefit liability. We review the sources and assumptions that go into those estimates and we determine that they're reasonable in relation to the financial statements. Continuing on, on page two there, we talk about a couple of major disclosures and Maddie alluded to them. There are multiple pages in your notes again this year, note 15 and note 16. And they discuss your pension plan and your post-employment benefit plan. Continuing on, starting at the difficulties encountered during the audit and continuing on to the next page. There's several items, disagreements with management, management representation, management consultations, other audit issues. These items are really the, the areas where we would dish out the dirt on the audit. Fortunately, or unfortunately, I guess, however you look at it, there's no dirt to dish out. We had no problems with management, no disagreements, and we had no problem getting a management representation letter from them. So continuing at the bottom of page two, we discuss the journal entries that were related to the audit. And these are the pages that are attached to the letter. There's, I believe, 15 pages attached. And the 13 of those 15 are journal entries. The first of those pages, the portrait pages, is the actual only journal entry that was recorded in the audit. And as you see there, it was provided by Katie and it's rather small. The remaining 12 portrait pages are what we call reclassifying journal entries. And those are basically just made for the external audit. They would not be recorded in the district's books. They're strictly to present the financial statements the way they need to look for external purposes. And then the two last pages that are attached, the landscape pages, those are entries that we identified during the audit, but they were small enough that they did not impact our opinion on the financial statements and management chose not to record them. We're just required to report those to you, so you're aware that we did identify some small entries. Continuing on to page three, towards the bottom of page three, we discuss the required supplementary information that Maddie discussed, the management discussion and analysis section and the pension schedules that are there after the note disclosures. As Maddie noted, we don't give an opinion on those, but we do have a responsibility to read those because they're in the same document with our audited financial statement in our report. And we have to make sure that they're consistent with what we give our opinion on and those sections were consistent. Then continuing on, other information, these are the supplementary schedules that we do give an opinion on. And again, the opinion on those supplementary schedules is unmodified, a clean opinion, exactly what you want to hear. And then finally, we note that certain sections, we don't give an opinion on and we don't have any responsibility for. Although, again, we do read those sections because they're in a document with our audited financial statements. We want to make sure that they're consistent and they are. Finally there, towards the bottom of page four, we talk about the discreetly presented component unit, the foundation, which Maddie noted is audited by another auditor and our opinion as it relates to the foundation in your financial statements is based on that opinion that was provided by the other auditor. So that's the post-governance letter. And the only other thing that we have left to do for the audit for the district is the Illinois Comptroller's Annual Financial Report filing, which is an electronic filing that is due by October 27. We're currently working on that with Katie. Don't expect to have any problems submitting that by the 27th. So that'll be done and everything will be done with audit this year by the end of this month. As always, it's a pleasure working with management at headquarters and at the various locations. I know we didn't really get to go out much this time. But we do want to thank Tim and Corky, Derek, Ellen, Alex, and of course, Katie and all their staffs for their assistance throughout the audit engagement in this very unusual year. Look forward to working with everyone again next year and Maddie and I are open to any questions you might have.
One particular question I had, and maybe I just misremember, but it seemed like there were the number of, I, I guess you, you called them, were they restatements? I mean, in, in, in the letter you've been going over, there are like 12 pages of recharacterizations. It seems like more than I remember from years past is remembering or I can't. Be present this time around.
I don't know exactly if it's more pages or not. I know you always have a number because every time you have a reclassification for any one of your funds, it generates a page. So I would say that you usually have quite a few pages. But as I noted, those aren't errors. Those aren't any, anything that would ever be recorded in your books. They're clear, they're solely to present the financial statements and mostly because the way our software works. If you have an asset account or a liability account and we need to split out a current piece of it, we have to do one of these reclass entries to create that separate account for our software. So generally, that's what generates these. There's also the government-wide entries, which is the, the one that has a lot of entries on it. That's strictly done for external financial statement purposes. Again, not something that you would record internally.
I think it's a pretty standard number of pages of entries and those last two entries where he talked about the ones that are landscaped, those ones we do every year also. There's always an entry to back out any receivables because we don't record, we have a zero-day receivable policy, but our system still records them because it's built that way, so we have to back them out and the other one's an IMRF adjustment, so there's not much we can do about it. And just accept it and record it.
Well, I was just curious and maybe I'm totally misremembering. It just seemed like more pages than I, than I recall in times past. And I was wondering if it related to our being, using our new accounting machinery somehow resulting in more of those, so.
No, no, I can tell you for certain it's not that.
Okay. I also had a question and I, I know you don't express an opinion on, on what comes from the actuary dealing with the IMRF stuff, but when I look at this on page 84, a net pension liability seems to oscillate quite a bit.
Yeah.
And I'm, it, it is, is that normal with other governmental agencies? It's just that IMRF has, has had big swings and, and some of their assumptions that have resulted in this for a lot of governmental agencies?
Well, part of the issue is what happens at year end with investments. If you recall, not, not this year, but the year before this one, there was a major drop right at the end of the year before 1231. The pension plans are measured as of 1231, so it's always behind you a little bit by four months at least. you a little bit by four months at least. And then the pension flow, that that activity flows into the pension calculation over a short, a longer period of time going into the future. So three years ago, you had a boom at the end of the years. So your pension liability went down about a year, two years later. Last year or two years ago, the investments had a steep drop right at year end and that impact the liability at the end of this year. So yeah, you have had an up and down the past couple of years. And the the driver for that is the what's happening with investments. You know, when you have those deep drops and those steep climbs right at year end, it's a shock to the pension, but it takes a year to to get in there. And then it carries on for several years going forward. They try to smooth it out, so it's not one gigantic gulp.
Thank you for the explanation. So we are not alone in governmental agencies that that this is happening with via IMRF. Is I believe what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, we've had several governmental IMRF employers that have jumped, you know, from the and a net pension asset to net pension liability, back to net pension asset. So it's just bumping back and forth. Fortunately, the actuarial calculations are totally dependent on those short term flips and flops. So you know, the amount you actually have to pay cash wise to the pension plan stays fairly smooth. And you know, that that is always paid a hundred percent, so that's not an issue. But yeah, we we've seen it with other large IMRF employers.
Do others have questions for the the auditors or Katie regarding this financial reports?
Nope.
So hearing none. Is anybody prepared to make a motion to accept the twenty twenty comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended April thirty, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in the second. Is there any comment or questions on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Mashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative. And so we have accepted the twenty twenty comprehensive annual financial report and I would also like to thank the auditors for the the job that they have done. Katie has always reported to us that that you folks have been very good to deal with. That you ask the tough questions, but you're you're always highly cooperative for and helping her get the information together that you require in order to do the proper job, so. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate having your business and we look forward to working with you next year. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good as well.
Thanks, Greg Maddie.
Okay, now if I get my act together properly, we can go back to the update report. And my apologies for for fumbling that one. We we received a written update report. Is is there anything online for tonight?
I don't believe Cedric's with us.
And were there any comments on the update Zoom meeting? Hearing hearing none, then let's move on to our consent agenda. And this evening, our con agenda consent agenda includes approval of the minutes of the September one stud board study session, the approval of the minutes of the September eight twenty twenty regular board meeting and approval of the minutes of the September seventeenth special board meeting. The acceptance of the monthly departmental reports, the three monthly departmental reports, approval of the monthly accounts payable and action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. Under our rules, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate action. Is there any commissioner wishing to remove anything from the consent agenda at this point? Seeing no indication of that, is there a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda and accept the information items listed in an anonymous banner?
Oh, move.
That's been moved and seconded and under the rules of our consent agenda, there is to be no further discussion at this point, so we will move to a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Mashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative and so we have approved that unanimously. That takes us on to our monthly financial reports as opposed to our our annual one, so.
All right. Can you guys hear me okay?
I'm editing a little breakup, but I don't.
Well, right now it says Katie.
I don't know either, but if you. My sound's gonna be an issue. I'm gonna call into the meeting again because I.
I would suggest that.
Think I should call in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I've never had those issues like I had at that study session last month. It's just gonna take me a.
Okay, I think I'm in the meeting now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, I'm really, really sorry about that. I'll just make sure to do this from now on. I have pretty unreliable internet out here in the country. I'll be more prepared next time to already be in the meeting and not slow everything down. Okay, sorry, I'm a little fragile now, but um tonight I'll just be going over with you the financial report for the month of September. This is five months into the fiscal year. At this point in the year, we have revenues of three million nine hundred and two thousand dollars. We've only received forty-three percent of our property taxes, but at the the first week of October, we received like a three million dollar tax disbursement for the taxes that were collected in September, so. We're gonna get right up there real quick. Are you still there?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I'm just getting messages about my internet being unstable and I don't think it's gonna let me share my screen. I'm trying. Okay.
I can see your screen. I don't know about.
Looks good. It's fine. It's fine.
Skipping all around on me. Sorry, I'm just having issues. Okay, there we go. This is where I wanted to be. This is the bottom of page one. Total expenditures for the period were two million seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars with a excess of revenues, over expenditures paid at the end of September of, oh my goodness. Getting so messed up. I really apologize. Just gonna get my paper copies out. Causing too much trouble. Okay, sorry, one point one eight million at the end of September. On page two is only the capital improvement fund. We have revenues of negative nine thousand three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Again, this is just because we have an accrual of interest from the last fiscal year that still hasn't been paid out and we have a lot of CDs in this fund that we have laddered with the new bond money in it. So when the interest comes due on those CDs, it will reverse that negative interest that's showing at the top line there. We have expenditures paid of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand with an excess of expenditures over revenues of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand at the end of September. Page three is what we call sum three. It's the first two pages added together. It shows the picture of the entire district. And at the end of September, we have fund balance of sixteen million eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. Following that are the main working funds of the district. I don't have anything particularly of note. I found it interesting, you know, with COVID, it there's just a lot more fluctuation, a lot less stability of what I normally would see at this point in the year. So you can see right here at the bottom of page four, this is just the general fund. And the general fund actually has a negative net expenditures at the end of this period, which is very rare. But that's almost primarily because we didn't receive that October property tax payment yet. And I normally also would do the transfers from general, sorry, from recreation and museum funds into the general fund, usually in November as well. That helps support the general fund for its ongoing operations. So those couple of normal fund sources haven't been received yet. And so with COVID and not having our normal earned revenues, it's making us have a negative balance there. But it's not anything that I'm concerned about just because in the end I know that it's gonna come in and we have a lot less expenditures than usual. It's just a timing thing. And then the recreation fund, which really has the biggest hit as far as loss of earned revenues, it's showing a pretty healthy increase in revenue right now at the end of September of six hundred and three thousand. So overall, you know, I think with our, we'll revisit the COVID forecast, you know, as we continue to hone it. And as more time goes on, I wasn't planning on presenting that every month, but I thought maybe quarterly, so in another two months I'd bring it back and we'd look at our progress for the year and just where we're where we're at compared to what our expectations were when we did that exercise. So from there, I'm gonna move on to the treasurer's report. I'm sure not having any luck sharing my screen. I'm just gonna stop that. It's just too much lag. You guys can still hear me okay, right?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, so hopefully you have the treasurer's report in front of you since I'm not having any luck sharing my screen. The treasurer's report shows a snapshot of the district's cash balances on one day, September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And we had a grand total, it show it shows the cash split out by fund and in which accounts it's invested. And we had a grand total of sixteen million six hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents on September thirtieth. On page two of the treasurer's report, this, the top section lists interest bearing accounts and the interest rates that we're receiving on those accounts, all of which have really tanked over the last couple of months, as I've noted. But every month they just go down further and further, so I'm hoping we'll see some some of that turnaround here in the next six months or so, but a lot of that just depends on the recovery of COVID and the total economy. We had a grand total of fifteen million five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of our funds invested in interest bearing accounts at the end of September. There were no changes to inter fund loans this period. And finally, on the on the bottom of page three or middle of page three, you can see total dispersment of funds for September was five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And with that, I present the treasurer's report to you for approval.
I'm over. Accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, and let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Mashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously.
Okay, I will go ahead and touch on the areas of activity in the capital budgets where there's been activity. There wasn't a whole lot of activity this period, but you can see on the first page in the series twenty nineteen A-bonds that we expended some funds on health and wellness facility design. On the next page, there was no, there was only one item of activity in the twenty twenty budget and it was some revenue that we received for tribute. On the twenty nineteen budget was where the most activity was. We had expenditures paid on tribute. And then we also expended some funds on, excuse me, the rock rifle structures, the interpretive exhibit at the nature center and on Liel Park improvement. There was one item of activity in the twenty eighteen budget and that was on construction crew project. And I believe the twenty seventeen budget had one item of activity as well, which was Crystal Lake Park Improvement. They're at the very bottom of that schedule. And there was no activity in the twenty sixteen budget this period. And with that, I believe, if you don't have any questions, Andy and Derek have some capital project updates before I have my final financial report to present.
Okay, I can jump in and start with Blair Auslad Project. Our staff team held a fifty percent review meeting with Upland Design and ERA this morning. We've been very pleased working with Upland, leading our project up to this point. Looking forward to continuing to work with them and ERA in the coming months. This is our first big project with Upland and I think we've all been really pleased and impressed with their work to this point. In the next couple of weeks, we'll have a site meeting at Blair with the full team. And then shortly after, we'll have a another review meeting in mid-November and that'll be at ninety percent design level. And currently, we're sticking with our originally planned schedule, even with the delay in receiving contract documents from the state for a grant agreement. That puts our project out to bid in January and we'll have a board recommendation for construction anticipated at the February regular board meeting. So if we continue to stick to the schedule, we'll anticipate construction activities beginning in April and going through July next summer. And we're gonna continue and work with the school district to make sure that their PE programming and tennis activities are informed and they're prepared for the interruption at the park as well as our district programs, events, affiliate groups and rentals during that anticipated construction period. With Crystal Lake Rehab, majority of the earthwork has been completed at the site at this point since our last board meeting. I think my last update to the board, the stone out proppings have been placed. They finished up with most of their rock structures throughout, including the scour protection, the stormwater outlets, final soil placement and grading around the lake edge. Trees and shrubs started to actually get delivered to the site today. And this week, the landscaping subcontractor Cardinal is on site and will begin installation and then in the next few days. ERA Stark and our staff team will be doing a site walk tomorrow morning to review some of those final planting locations for those trees and shrubs and to review a number of other items at the site while we're all together. As with the last few board meetings, I do have some pictures to share again. Katie, if you don't mind giving me the ability to share my screen, I can pull some of those up for everyone to take a look.
Andy, while you're doing that, I'll mention that we, once we have got all the invasive shrubs and trees out, we came to realize that there wasn't much of a crash barrier, if you will, to kind of protect a wayward vehicle or bicycle from finding its way into the lake. And so we had a meeting with the engineers on the lake project, as well as the road engineers to talk about, as part of the road project, what additional installations might be useful in helping to really kind of protect that from happening. You may recall that there's been a few instances over the years where cars have found their way to the lake, often, you know, overnight or icy conditions, but some of the things we're looking at right now are extended barrier curbs, guardrails, or possibly the use of some limestone to help to create more of a shoulder in places where we're more, we're most concerned.
Okay, can everyone see the picture that I brought up? Okay, so this is the first outcropping that went in place. You can see the accessible fishing pier there in the background. The water level basically goes probably to the top of that first stone that you see on the bottom here. We're creating a little bit of height there to try to deter geese movement onto the stones. Next picture is across from the lake house. So this is the seating wall and goes towards the rock outcropping. It's kind of tough to see, but it's at the end of that bottom row of block there. And so the, the soft path will actually go between these two rows of stones here and then have seating behind and up front. This is a view from the lake house of that same area. The water line here basically goes to the top of that rock toe area. And then you can see the outcropping. If you can see my cursor, it's over here. And this is the current condition of our, what will be the ramp and stair access to the new boat dock. In the background, you can actually see the old boat dock has been removed and pulled to the side, but not fully removed from the park. So in this area, there's still quite a bit of work to be done. It'll have kind of a zigzag ramp that goes down to the wood dock with a staircase that kind of bisects between the ramp, allowing for an accessible access to where that new boat dock will, will end up in the future. And then we have our family game area by the large pavilion up top above the lake house. Before I was showing pictures of just the kind of concrete pads and walks, now you can see we have the, the tables with the game stencils in place and our concrete bag set. Stark did take the opportunity at the end of the day, last Friday, to test out these bags. And they reported that they worked very well and they were pleased with how the bags slid and the gameplay. So that was good news. And then we have our kayak launch here. You can see the sediment basin in the background. This is along the road, across from the small parking area that's kind of adjacent to the Carl parking area within the Fairgrounds property. And then this was taken last Friday. As of today, all the rock has been placed, but this is the water makeup feature. So they'll have cobble in between. This will all get planted with the limestone blocks that will then kind of surround the feature itself and then have little bridge areas in between. And that was all the pictures I had for CLP, but I did have one more picture with another project. This is our Liel gazebo, our finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. If you remember, before we got into the Liel parking and path project, we also were getting services from Dean Rose to, who, he did our Carl gazebo as well to do an enclosure for Liel Park. This picture is actually taken by Karen. She was sending us some photos in the morning. She arrives fairly early to the cottage and kind of gives a nice picture where you can have the interior lit up as well. So this is how it looks now. I think it looks fantastic. We've got the locks placed. So it's all enclosed and ready to go now that we have the accessible path that moves around it to allow entry to the cottage from the parking lot. I wanted to make sure I could share that as well.
Well, I'm sorry to say that it doesn't look very Disneyfied at Crystal Lake Park. You guys aren't keeping up to the expectation here. I can tell that really annoys me. The, the park is really looking good.
Yeah, I was, I was walking through Crystal Lake Park yesterday, late afternoon, and it just looks fabulous. I realized there's an awful lot of landscaping to come back in, but the, the length of the vistas now is really pretty impressive compared to what it used to be with, with all the overgrown shrubs and invasives that we had there.
One of the comments we've gotten most often, people really can get a sense of how big the lake is, the size of the park, you know, the islands. It's just the, the whole landscape reads, reads more intuitively now.
Plus, if there's any other questions, that's all I have for updates tonight.
Okay, then I will go ahead and present the bond information that was shared in your packet. And I, I hopefully got my screen share working again. We talked, Finance Study Group, and I think when Aaron came last year, he also let the board know that we have the option of pushing our rollover bonds back. Rather than our typical, typically we would have a competitive bid in November and do a closing in December. The advantage of pushing it back is that you don't pay interest for as long of a period of time for the time that you hold the bond. So he was saying that we could even do a bid in January or February if we weren't ready to start spending the money yet. So we decided to do, go a little bit more conservative this year, but we are pushing it back a little bit. We're talking, the schedule is here at the bottom of the screen. We don't have to do a BINA hearing at all this year or a BINA publication because we still have some dollars available from our last BINA. But we're talking about doing a competitive sale on December 3rd with adoption of the bond ordinance at the regular meeting on December 8th and doing the closing of the bonds on December 22nd. So that gets us a little closer to our goal. We didn't want to push it too far that we got hung up in the holidays as far as the, the sale part of it. So if we had done, for example, an early January sale, we might not have had as competitive bids because people are still kind of doing their holiday thing. But this was a chance to try doing this a little bit differently and we're going to see how this schedule works through. And I wanted to share this page with you as well. If it'll let me load it. Come on, computer. Here we go. One more. No, now it gets way too far. Goodness gracious. Well, the page I'm trying to share with you, if I can get it to load. Eric, no, that's not it. My gosh, what's wrong with this thing? I did not click that many times, I swear. About to give up again. Okay. If you have it in front of you, it is page nine at the bottom. So it says page nine. There it is. Okay, this is the page that I was trying to display.
You had it and then it went zooming on past.
I know. I don't, I don't know. I'm technology and up today. I don't know. So it's some sort of connection issue that I'm having where it's like lagging and whatever. Anyway, so we're, we're, we're looking at an issue size of around 600, sorry, 868,000 with after issuance costs, sorry, after interest costs, the principal amount would be 851,905. And then we would have issuance costs of 11,100 that was shown on the, that's shown on the next page. With total proceeds that'll be able to be used for capital projects of 840,805. So obviously, it's a little bit bigger than prior years because each year we get the debt service extension basis increased by the change in the consumer price index. And on that estimate, that was on the previous page of that 2% interest rate. That's a conservative rate. Last year's GL bonds, rollover bonds, we had a rate of 1.69%. So hopefully we'll receive favorable bond interest rates this year as well. With the state of the economy, I think all interest rates are fairly low. So hopefully that'll be good for us and the amount of principal changes based on what the interest amount winds up needing to be to fill up the debt service extension base. So we may wind up with more principal than that as well, which sometimes happens. And we don't really find that out until the day of the sale. And that's all I have to say about the bond issue. I just wanted to make sure to get the preliminary information planning documented to the board's hands. And if you have any questions or anything, I'm happy to answer them.
On this page that you were showing, can you, can you explain what bond year dollars are?
That would be a great question to ask when Aaron comes to present the, what it is, he's explained it before. But what it is, is that's whatever calculation that they use to compare the bond to each other. They get them all broken down and that's how they're able to compare every bond dollar. It's like comparing apples to apples. They break it down into bond year dollars. So that's the number that they wind up looking at to know who won the bid. But I think we should bring that back up in December when Aaron comes to, to present.
Now, there's, there's no action that we need to take on this tonight. You're just showing us the, the planned procedure on, on doing the bidding and purchase.
Right. Normally, I would present this information to you in August and just stick it in the board packet as information. It's just coming a little bit later this year since our sale's happening a little bit later. So there's no action at this point, just for the board's information and so they know what's coming.
Okay, were there any questions for Katie? Any further questions for Katie? Hearing none, then let's move on to the executive director's report.
Thank you, Michael. Well, sure treat seeing those pictures at Crystal Lake Park. What an amazing transformation. I think we've heard so many positive comments about how it looks and how it's going to look. I think it's also fair to say occasionally we'll get some negative comments. I think landscape work and major public works like that are hard to vision. I think people sometimes need to see it all in its completed form. I really, really enjoy it, but we still have a lot of work to do and hopefully we'll bring everybody along with us. Starting out tonight, I hope you noticed in the report, there was a You Belong Here report that was included in the other reports. That was the base report that was used to submit to the call to action to really update the University of Illinois group that's looking at our DEI areas to kind of take all the local units of government, pull them together into more of a organized chart of who's doing what, find out where we're maybe having some shortfall or gaps and then come up with a plan to, to basically start to really pull that together. I think that group, the larger, you know, university community group is looking at a, you know, very aggressive program. I think when we first met with the university, they were interested in a kickoff event that would happen, I believe, next week. Obviously, that was a lot of things coming very fast and our more recent discussions have been, you know, effort to try to consolidate all of our ongoing efforts, not really slow it down, but get it organized and really find out where we need to work, what we have lacking and kind of where we stand current. I did want to suggest, if the board's interested, this is a report that we would be happy, the staff would be happy to continue just to update us on our progress. Certainly, that would be up to the board. They would like to add that to the agenda on a regular basis, or we could certainly think of it in, you know, periodic opportunities. Just, just let us know. I'd like to see that. There's a lot of information there. I would say one of the first things on the very top of the admin report, we have been talking and working with Chris Artifayo Consulting. I think our original idea was to start working on a whole DEIB, the B is for Belonging, plan for the district. We've decided to sort of break that down into some smaller parts. Some of our first needs are really getting a better handle on our hiring practices, how we interview, how we advertise for jobs, training of staff that serve on interview panels, coming up with new rubrics so we can score people, looking at new locations to put job openings information with all the intent of hoping to get more diverse people of color, you know, to respond actually to, to be hired. So we have a lot of work to do on that. But that should take maybe, maybe about eight weeks to get that portion and then we'll rebound and go back to the full report. Because we talked about last month, the You Belong Here matrix groups will, will be working with us on that. And we would like to put together an RFQ, kind of go a more formal route, get that information out to maybe more groups, interview and select a final group. Not saying that some of the groups we've talked with already or that we've heard about wouldn't maybe be that group, but we just thought might be better to bring along all of the staff, develop a little more formal kind of goals. What are we trying to get out of this? And also mostly to help the responders. When they do submit a proposal, they'll have a little more information on hopefully what we'd like to see. So once we get that at least drafted, we'd like to share that back with the board before it goes out. I think I mentioned the call to action. We're excited about that. So we've got really these two parallel areas that are moving at the same time on the more, the bigger scale. Other additions to that work, we want to do some work on how do we bid? How do we buy? How do we procure things at the district? So a local consultant, his name is Fred Coleman, has been working with staff to, to help us get a better handle on that. So we'll be coming forward with more information about that. And we'll, we'll see how we track our progress. Some other updates, let's see. Janet and I met with Sharon Irish. She's a local, kind of a community artist. She was very involved at the university. She's kind of leading the work that Saytu Jones, who's a Miller Communications Artist in Residence at, at the U of I, will be in town. He's actually been held up due to COVID and we hope we can extend his time here. But just looking at some unique opportunities to maybe do some art-based projects, either with Saytu or, and/or with others in the community. Sharon works a lot with Will Patterson. They do some, like the Hip Hop Express. They do some other activities to really engage youth in, in getting involved. So we'll continue that discussion and hopefully bring that along as well. Another new update I wanted to mention, you may have seen in the reports, the UPD is working on our first climate action plan. We've got two co-leaders, Savannah Donovan and Cara Dudek are leading that effort. We've got multiple areas going with that as well. We have a staff steering committee that'll be really working on the ultimate effort to pull up the climate action plan together, which will be similar to our strategic plan. It'll have a more of a five-year window horizon that can be updated and reviewed each year. So we'll try to offset the strategic plan updates and the climate action updates so they don't all come at the same time. We also have staff working with youth, uh, through the nature center, Chelsea Prawls, working with, um, climate action activities with, uh, middle schoolers. And we have a community-wide group called C4, uh, that Savannah's leading also. So we have, you know, several different elements there. But it's a very important issue and we think getting a plan together that will really can sort of lay out our steps, give us a step-by-step approach to some of the actions we can take to really do a much better job in communicating, educating, bringing, uh, folks together on what we can do to make a difference. So we're excited about that. We working with staff board up deck over the next several months with the hope of, uh, maybe an early spring approval of that, that new plan. Eric and I also met with the city of Urbana, um, with Carol Mitten and, uh, Will Kocowski. Will's, uh, in the planning department, but he's helped Carol kind of revamp their capital improvement program. So we shared our plan, saw their plan, and obviously the purpose was to look for overlaps. We had a very good discussion on, uh, opportunities, which will take a lot of advanced planning. It's not something you probably look at in a month and see where intersections are and, you know, start putting a project together. But probably over a couple of years working together, we hope to look for opportunities where maybe we could bring more improvements, maybe to one area of town. If we have things in mind on schedule, they do too, might make our residents feel like they got more of a complete project. Again, those are hard things to do, but we see the value in doing that. We talked about looking at TIF opportunities, improvements, you know, things we could do to help that, things the city could do that might benefit us. Things I think of is, you know, the inclusion of part of Crystal Lake Park in that new TIF, which certainly could benefit us, you know, probably down the road. That'll be something as TIF values increase, we might see some opportunity there. Also in grant, uh, sort of coordination, uh, good ones to think about are the ITAP. When we get into streets and roads and trails, you know, we all do that kind of work. So if there was ways to collaborate or to, um, hit areas that might be multiple, provide multiple improvements, we see that as a real benefit. Also met with Andrea Rudy from the city. She's spearheading the city's comprehensive plan. That is their official legal document. They're required to have a, uh, updated plan. And I think they're doing some new things, uh, with that approach. They wanted to interview all the local, um, leaders at different government units to kind of put a face to each group and kind of give you a very brief video of, um, what each group does and sort of their budgets and their, their mission. Uh, but we should pay a lot of attention to the comprehensive plan because it does begin to outlay, uh, new development areas. Things we, I communicated with Andrea about is, uh, land acquisition for future parks as the city grows. You know, I wanted her to understand that that's something you have to really get ahead of. After an area is developed, it's much, much harder to try to establish a park or to buy land or, you know, free up space that could be, um, you know, used for, um, open space, trails, what have you. So we had a very good discussion about that. We'd like to share our health and wellness plan with city staff so that they're fully aware of, of what we have, um, planned for Washington Street. So we'll be setting up that meeting, um, also. Speaking of health and wellness, I know all the staff are working very hard on, uh, the fundraising aspect. We're still in the silent phase. And, uh, we had our update today with CCS. We have a lot of fundraising to do. I think, uh, the staff team met with them just to get an update. We have some very aggressive, uh, efforts over the next two to three months. So I think everyone's on board and ready to double down to meet with our folks that we're meeting with. Certainly the next phase will be more of a public or community phase and we can do some more outreach, education, and hopefully attract, you know, some more people that we can share the plan with. I think CCS's obvious plan is kind of working from the inside, people you know, who, who can you go to that know us? And then working, you know, further out to the, the wider community as we go. Lastly, a couple of sculpture updates. We had one installation at the sensory garden, uh, this week, or sorry, last week. And, uh, went really well. That's, it's called Growing Wings. I think Derek had a picture of it in, in the planning and operations report. Uh, we had a sculpture celebration last evening out at the park. We have, uh, local couple, Paul and Lori Ellinger, helped purchase or purchased the molecular reflection sculpture. And we had a plaque out there with their name honoring them. And so just a kind of a brief, small group, there were about six or seven people. And they were real, real pleased about it. Hopefully someday if we are able to meet in groups, we can do, do a little more on, on that end. And then we have two more pieces coming this fall that'll be coming together. So we anticipate their arrival probably in a few more weeks and that'll be a nice addition to Meadowbrook Park. Um, and lastly, I just want to really thank our capital improvement team. We've been working on our next year's capital, the five-year capital. There's a number of staff that represent all the, uh, departments and divisions that work on that. It's very hard work. You know, it's grueling, two and three-hour meetings. There's so many great projects, things we need, want to do, but certainly we're limited by resource, time and staff. So constantly adjusting on a monthly basis. I really appreciate their time and I think maybe to the public, it makes it look a little bit smoother. But each month we kind of grind through all the potentials, looking for new resources or sometimes rearranging the order of projects to hope, hopefully keep up with the cash flow and keep up with the project demands. I can answer any other questions i-if you have any.
I just wanted to say that that growing wing sculpture looks really nice back there. That's a, that's a beautiful piece. We saw it for the first time to, uh, yesterday. So it's a beautiful piece.
Right. We'll let the artist know it's already been enjoyed.
The other thing I wanted to ask you is, um, is there any way for the board to be kept apprised? Cause you know, this is a, uh, uh, a priority of ours in terms of the number of, of, uh, people of color who have been interviewed for positions, um, the number who have been hired. And, um, also, um, uh, if we have worked with any, uh, businesses that are owned by women or minority people, it would be good for us to know that and maybe to know that when, when, when there's a, I imagine those are minor projects that are not going to necessarily come to us. Uh, but, but if we could be apprised of that, that way we know how well that, um, that goal is, is being pursued.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think we could pull together a report now just to outline our sort of staff demographics. Certainly we can include full-time and part-time staff. If you have a preference, let us know.
Okay.
Obviously we have more part-time staff and we'd probably likely see more, you know, age, um, and sort of background diversity, people of color versus, you know, our full-time staff where we don't have as much turnover. But I understand what you're saying. It's probably good to get a baseline, see where we are and, uh, where movement can happen. On the, uh, sort of bidding and the businesses, we can certainly anticipate that. We'll get more information. I think Derek's got some anticipated ideas of things we can do right now or sooner, sort of midterm and then longer term. So we can update you on those as well.
Yeah, we, we anticipate that, uh, Fred Coleman will be providing us recommendations on what areas to begin to, to work on right away. And if you, you might've noticed in my report that, uh, we, we, we kind of jumped and began working with, uh, the champagne list of, um, minority and women business enterprise contractors and, uh, got, uh, a contractor on that list and it went wonderfully. And, uh, excited to, to have the opportunity to work with them in the future.
That's good. Yeah, I did see that. I was impressed by that.
I also wanted to maybe loop us back a little bit back to the you belong here report. I know the rec staff obviously has a large, you know, presence in that report. We appreciate their efforts. I think the idea staff had is, is that something we would want to have on the agenda to address each month? Where we could have, you know, discussions like these questions. I think it'd be a very good public face. So anybody tuning into the, you know, the meetings would know what, what we're doing and what we're talking about. Obviously this report has, you know, months and months ago work and then our current work. So it might not be a very long report each month or a section. But it's something we think is important and we're not sure how else to elevate it if we're, if we're not talking about it, you know, and have it, have a place on the agenda for it. So again, we don't need an answer tonight, but certainly would love any discussion or thoughts about that or the report or any of the information in it.
Well, I, I'm happy to provide feedback tonight.
Great, please do.
I mean, I think yes to, so I like the report. I think it's, it's, it's important to document what we've been doing and what we are. And I also like the idea of having a standing meeting, sort of with reports to highlight, where new activity is happening in, in this area. And so I think that is a good, good suggestion and I'd support that.
I always look to the board president or the board, you know, to determine what the agenda items would be. But I just want to mention, you know, it, it also could be having a guest pop in, maybe share something quickly, some photos, images. So it doesn't all have to be just dry reporting, but it might be a lively conversation. Maybe we bring some staff or up deck, you know, to share stories, what, whatever you'd like, but we're a pretty thoughtful and creative group. I'm sure we could find ways to make that an interesting spot on the agenda.
I'd just like to say, uh, absolutely, we want that information coming forward. If one talks about doing a, a monthly report, it can be pretty easy to, to, um, lose the, lose what's really going on with the individual details there. For example, when we have the budgeting stuff, we have the year-to-date items in addition to what's happening right at that moment. And I think having that sort of information available to us would be quite valuable. That is what's happened through the year and here's what happened in the last month.
Well, good, good thoughts. We, we'd love to do that. Well Ken, if you have other thoughts or ways we can improve that report or any of our reporting, oh, as always, let us know. We're happy to try new things and see what we can do. That's all I had, Michael, unless there's any other questions or comments.
Well, hearing none. Uh, thank you, Tim. I'll move on to the president's report. Our next meeting will be November third, board study session. We'll, I'll be keeping, uh, at least one eye on, on some other things that evening, but, uh, or perhaps we can get our, get our meeting over before the call, the polls are actually closed, uh, in that many places. And then, uh, it's the time of year when we have a lot of things to deal with. The November ten regular board meeting, we're, we're gonna need a public hearing for truth and taxation. Uh, that's a topic that's going to, that is later in our agenda today is making our decisions on, on what tax levy we're going to be proposing for the coming year. And we have to do an approval of our annual non-referendum bond sale ordinance. Approve the annual capital project budget and capital budget revisions, EDA transition plan update. And, uh, appoint a board representative to the IAPD annual meeting if there's actually going to be one. Are they actually intending to do an in-person meeting?
We don't know yet. I think there's some efforts underway to try to poll people and see what people would like to do or willing to do. I, I think they're definitely planning on at least a, uh, you know, virtual conference. We just got our documents in the mail, so we know it's gonna, we have to have a delegate and all the formal stuff ready. That'll be in the November agenda. But I don't.
I guess that representative is, is the one representing us for doing voting. So that I, I, I presume that would still be of views, even if it's a virtual business meeting.
Correct.
I didn't have anything further, uh, on a president's report, uh, moving on to liaison reports. We did have a, uh, finance study group meeting on, on September twenty-fifth. And, uh, we discussed capital projects and health and wellness. And, uh, some of the levy estimates, uh, that Katie had been developing. So most, also that is, I believe all that is stuff that has come forward, uh, either in our study session or tonight. Is there anything for the policy study group to report?
No, we have not met.
And, uh, the Urbana Parks Foundation representative, Roger.
We met yesterday. Um, Steve Rug, uh, uh, announced that, uh, we have, we're now wrapping up the campaign for the next century, um, with a win. Uh, we exceeded our goal. And, uh, we will declare it finished as of October thirty-first. Uh, and my understanding is there is to be a, um, a virtual toast, uh, to celebrate it on November twelfth. I, I guess we'll hear more about that. The other thing that I wanted to say is I know that, um, uh, Fred Del Coleman has been in the process of contacting all the, uh, the members of the foundation board, uh, to ask them, uh, to consider what their gift for the health and wellness project would be. Fred and I had a long conversation, uh, about a number of things, but, but one of the things that I agreed to do is that I would contact those, um, uh, commissioners who have not yet been approached. So that would be, um, Michael and Meredith and LaShonda. So I'll be in touch with you guys. It'll be a brief meeting. But, uh, just to, to find out, um, what, what we want to do is to, to show that the leadership of the foundation and leadership of the district are, are willing to be supportive of the health and wellness project before we go public with it. So, um, that's all I have.
Thank you, Roger. Were there any questions regarding the foundation? And moving on to the up deck, uh, planning study group, is there anything to report there?
We haven't met, but we'll be beating in, uh, November.
Okay. Look forward to hearing something next month then. We're ready. The consent agenda. Oh, we have no old business. We've already done new business item A. So we are moving on then to new business item B, action on resolution twenty twenty dash ten, determining amount to be raised by taxation.
Katie's got some information.
Thanks. Um, I included in your board packet was a worksheet to that, um, presented three options for the board to select amongst, uh, for a potential levy for the coming year. The options presented take into account, um, an estimate of our, of our levy. That's based on an estimate we, we received from the county in September. But that estimate continues to change until it's finalized in April. So, uh, there's a, the reason we asked the board to select a percentage is to account for any changes that may take effect, um, between now and April, when the, when the extension's finalized and the EAV is known. And those estimates, you know, are pretty rough and especially with the hospital situation still in litigation. There's just a lot of unknowns, um, to the district. For the last several years, we've, the board has approved a fairly high number to, uh, increase our estimate by. And they've selected what we would call the twenty-five percent option. There's a chart on the backside of the memo that shows the way the board has selected those options each year, um, for the last ten years or so. And, um, so the options I presented to you are the estimated levy plus twenty percent, plus twenty-five percent and plus thirty percent. So those are the options that you're being asked to pick amongst. Michael, I don't know if you wanted to take the floor and kind of give your, we had an email exchange today, um, if you want to explain that and I can bring up a chart or what, you want me to explain it or it's up to you?
Well, as I was looking over the, that table of the, the plus twenty percent, the plus twenty-five percent, it occurred to me and, and just looking at the numbers, that, uh, it might be useful for us to go to, uh, at a levy of eight million five hundred thousand, which would, uh, keep the black box number for where we had to say under 30%. And I think Katie probably has available something that would show what that 8,500,000 would be relative to the 8,600 and some odd change. And I'm stupidly seem to have misplaced that sheet of paper that I did my calculations on. So I hope Katie has what she sent me back in the email.
Yeah, I, do you see my screen? I'm sharing the information. This is with Michael's. Michael was wanting this number to be 8,500,000. So I redid the calculation. It winds up being instead of plus 20 or plus 25, it's plus 23.51713%, which is fine. Even the plus 20%, I think, the, the problem is the, the plus 20% does accept the new hospital property, but the hospital property's value is a complete estimate. So we have no idea if that value that they assigned to Carl three or four years ago is even accurate. And so it's just supposedly the 20% would accept that, but it's just, there's just so much unknown that, you know, to have a healthy estimate, we would probably want to pick a little bit larger than that. But I think that Michael's suggestion of this 23.51713% does that just fine. If the board were to select this option, you'll want to read this bottom line number into the proposed motion, 9,377,303. So if anybody wants to write that into their suggested motion, that's the number that you'll need to fill in the blank there. If this is what the board selects. And I'm happy to answer any other questions if you want to discuss any of the other options. But Michael's proposal of keeping our numbers under 30% I think makes a lot of sense and isn't quite as much of a shock. I mean, we, we kind of talk about this every year. The levy process is a little bit archaic and we're very strapped by PTEL tax caps of the way we do this process. And in the end, while the black box can be shocking, it's not what actually happens. And I, I hope that if you were to get questions from the public on this, that you could refer to that chart that I put on the back of the memo, because that really goes to show that we may, we may put in the black box 28.94%, but what we really got was 4% or 3.3% or some much smaller number. So I think that that chart on the back of the memo really goes to show of a 10-year history that that's not the reality of what winds up happening unless, in the case of the two years where we actually had a referendum approval, those two years, we did have a higher increase, but they were voter approved. So I think, you know, that goes to show the way that this process works, that we can really ask for anything we want, but we get what we get based on the PTEL calculations that are built into the law. So this is just to accommodate for new property that may come on the tax rolls. And it's an especially high number because of the uncertainty of the hospital litigation.
I guess I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I don't get this.
I don't get, I don't get why we're choosing the number as, like the total corporate special purpose funds as opposed to the percentage and why we need such an accurate number opposed to the 25, which gives us a little bit more flexibility. I'm just struggling.
My, my point was simply, if you, if you look at the table that's on the back of the resolution itself, the draft resolution, Katie did a, did a table up and the plus 25% line and the proposed options included 8,602,033, for which we would have to do a black box advertisement of 30.49%. And my suggestion is simply to reduce to 8,500,000 dollars even on that line, which would then reduce the black box advertisement to 28.94%. Because it's under 30% as what we are advertising, it's $100,000 less in the levy plus some change. So it's not a huge difference in the levy, but I think just in terms of, of that big black box number, it's a little less startling in my view. And that was the only reason I was suggesting that.
I don't, yeah, and you, you can see on this page that I'm showing here that the actual dollars we received in this year's levy is 7.4 million. And this levy that we're asking the board to vote on, you know, is quite inflated at 9.3 million. So, you know, that, that difference in the amount there needs to allow for one, the increase in the change in the CPI that were allowed every year, and two, any increases in new property. And that, that second item is really just a guess because of all of the unknowns of the regular unknowns of receiving an estimate in September that's not finalized for April and also receiving, and then also the hospital is the other big unknown. And any, any option between 20% and 30% I think is acceptable. It's just how much risk you take. The lower you go is a risk that you might leave money on the table. And until the hospital situation gets worked out, we, we don't, there's not a whole lot more information that we can receive about that. So.
What, what I'm not understanding is the, the three choices were given, 20, 25 and 30%. The, are they the total, is that the total tax extension?
So the 20, 25 and 30 is when I take the estimated, the estimated levy, which is already an increase over the prior year. So the estimated levy is what I would call 0%, and then I timed that estimated levy by 20, 25 and 30. So it winds up being a total increase over the prior year of more than 20, 25 and 30. But I just give you those round numbers. That's how Dottie did it. So, you know, it, that, I understand why that's confusing. Maybe I'll consider changing that in the future. It's just to give the board a, a number to say I want 20, 25 and 30 options. But I could just as easily name them options one, two and three with the actual percentage increases.
I'm still not being able to work out the, the pick one numbers, which I mean, which is fine with Michael's idea of 8,500,000.
I think, I think from, from what I understand from what Michael was going for on the option that I presented that said 25%, the 25% option, it, it was a little bit daunting to see a percentage that was over 30%. So he kind of split the difference between the options that I presented of 20 and 25 to get it down below 30%.
Right. So I think what is confusing is that 30% is also an option. And that's not what we're talking about.
Correct. That's not what we're talking about. If you look at the worksheet itself, on the 25% option, the actual increase is 30.04% or something like that for
The worksheet does not have those specific numbers. That's why I'm like lost.
I think it does.
Oh, I see.
I think it does. It's right here. I don't know if you can see my screen, but it's in this middle chart in the middle column. That's the percentage that he was trying to get under 30%.
It's on the back of the worksheet. It's item Roman numeral two.
Right.
Yes, yep.
30.49, Katie?
Yeah, 30.49, sorry. Yep, 30.49 is the, that particular percentage is the one that he was working to adjust down below 30.
Gotcha.
But the proposed option of 8.6 million doesn't jive with anything that's in the resolution area.
Right. The resolution, for the resolution itself, you'll just read that bottom line number that is, that I was saying is 9,377,303. But this worksheet itself gets published in the newspaper just like this with whatever option you pick. So it has these percentages in it, depending on which option you pick. The full resolution actually is listed. Not the resolution. This full notice of property tax increase gets published with those percentages. So I think that's what he was being aware of and cognizant of. For the suggested motion tonight, I basically just needed you guys to tell me which options to pick. So however you choose to word that is fine.
I just have a quick question. So why do we advertise higher in the news than what we're actually doing? So like 28.94% is what's being advertised, but we're going to say, for instance, vote for 25%. Is, I mean, are there ramifications from that? Or I guess that's where I'm confused.
Well, again, it, it's because it's a highly confusing system. Let me just put it straight out there. We are in a circumstance where there's enormous uncertainty about what the equalized assessed value for the district will be next year, dependent on if a court case were decided a certain way or another before that comes out. We have to do the levy now. And even if we do a levy now and a court case comes down in the subsequent months, but before the PTEL determination is made, we end up losing out on potential revenue source from that extra property coming on the rolls. So we're throwing darts at the wall in advance with minimal information. And the, the table that Katie has prepared, where you see this probable plus 20%, she has calculated a, a probable, based on probable EAV. But probable is also based on a lot of guesswork. And so it, that, that number of a proposed levy.
You're breaking up, Michael.
Oh, sorry. It's, it's a matter of providing headroom for if unforeseen events or things that we cannot control or project accurately happen after we make our levy request and the time at which the PTEL calculation is done.
Yeah, I think I might be able to, I think I might be able to speak to LaShonda's point as well, just to say, so if you look at the first line in the chart, the chart of, under item number two in the notice, if you look at the first line item where it says probable plus 20%, so, and then the percentage that, to the left of that says 25.27%. Well, probable is already 5.27% more than last year's number. And then you add 20% more to it. So I think that's where it's confusing is the 20, 25 and 30 is just, is just me putting a percentage increase on top of a probable amount that's already an increase over the prior year. So we won't get in any trouble because the numbers we publish in the newspaper are these actual percentages, the 25.27 or the 30.49. The 20, 25 and 30 is just so that you guys can refer to these numbers in an easy way. And I'm considering making that different next year so that it's clearer and less confusing. So I'm thinking in my head how I would be able to do that. Again, like this is a system that Dottie used. And maybe it's not, I think the system overall is confusing, but maybe the way that it's formulated. It used to say things like 3, 5 and 7% increase. So it was a lot smaller, but seeing these bigger numbers maybe makes it, and they're very similar to what the total increases are. It can be very confusing.
So Katie, when we have voted on this in the past, then we voted on a number, but that's not the number that showed up in the black box.
So if you voted on, for example, if you were to vote for the plus 25% option, the black box, the, the little gray spaces in the black box, this is the black box that you're seeing right here on this page. It's the draft of the black box. So the little gray boxes get filled in with the numbers in the two left columns. So if you choose the plus 25% option, it'll say 8,602033, and it'll say 30.49% in those first two gray boxes. Yep. And then in the two gray boxes on the bottom, it'll also say 9.4 million and 27.23%. So all of this information gets published.
I understand that. I'm just trying to say, so in the past, it's already been inflated from what we thought we had voted for.
Well, I mean, I would hope that the information I, this is the same information I always present. So I hope that the board, when they voted, was aware that the percentages that were being published were, you know, if they picked 25, that it read 30.49.
Well, where, where I'm going is not to be critical of, of you in any way, but just to say, Michael, is what is magical about this this year is the number 30?
Well, look, I, I know this is confusing stuff and I, you know, what we vote for in the resolution is a single dollar figure.
Yes.
And all this other stuff is calculated back out off of that. We propose a dollar figure that we know is going to be higher than what we anticipate it is ultimately going to be. But we do that so that in case there's a sea change, if you will, that, that takes place after we have to approve that levy number and before the PTEL calculation actually gets made, we don't end up losing potential revenue for the district. But it's one single dollar figure for the levy that we vote for in the resolution. And it's the sum of the item, the, the dollar figure in section four and that in section two.
I think it would be easier to understand. And I don't, as I'm agreeing with Meredith, I, I don't remember this. No, voting for something and it turns out that the, that the percentage is actually higher than that. So it would seem to me that we would be better off if we had the, what, the actual percentage that we're choosing from, 20, 25 or 30, what that, what that total amount would be. Does that make sense?
Well, you can do that, Nancy, if you just ignore the third column.
Yep.
Ignore the third column. So the proposed options.
Right. And the numbers that you're, you are proposing just $1 amount on the suggested motion. So, you know, but in the future, perhaps I will, instead of it saying 20%, I'll make it say 22.62 and 27.23 and 31.85. Because that is confusing.
Reference, that's where I was struggling, like, oh, on the third column, this plus 20, 25, 30, like, I couldn't figure that out. I'm sorry. That's where I, and these numbers are not, the numbers match up in the, in number four, but not in, in two. So this is where I'm lost. And I, and maybe we need to have headers, but maybe you can't because this is exactly the black box. But like if the columns could have headers.
Maybe we need a dummy sheet.
Also.
I can add, I can add headers to it. It's just a worksheet. So I can add headers to this.
That might help us all.
Okay, yep. I appreciate all of the, I mean, literally like this is the same worksheet that Dottie would present. So I inherited it and continued using it, but I think it causes confusion every year. If it can be improved, I appreciate the suggestion. So I will try to make those changes.
But, but so what I'm struggling with still, and I apologize, is why doesn't 25% get, oh, between number, between the graph in two and four, which four has the numbers that seem to actually match that's in our agenda. I'm struggling with why 25, are those not the same? Like why 25% doesn't work?
Okay, because in number three, the bond amount, it doesn't change at all. It's a set amount. So it winds up lowering the percentages between the chart in graph two and the chart in graph four. Does that explain that?
Sure.
The bond, the bond limitation amount is not something we get to pick.
Yes.
I mean, but we could, we could choose to levy less than that, but the maximum that we can do is, is set by a formula. set by a formula and that much is known. Doesn't, doesn't relate to the EAV of the district at all. So that's a, that's a essentially a known number that's derived from from last year to this year based on the CPI.
So I think I can manage your suggestion, Michael. I think I, I think I'm finally with you. So.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't explain it better along the way.
The same.
Katie, can you send out something that kind of breaks it down? I don't, I mean, I don't know. I guess in more and and lame in terms, so we can understand, like, you know, what the breakdown actually means. I don't, I don't know if it's step by step. I don't know. Just.
Yeah. Let me put some thought to it and I'll do more next year to uh, make sure that this goes a little further.
Maybe we haven't been paying enough attention, but it doesn't, I mean, I don't remember having this difficulty in years past. I thought I had a pretty good understanding.
I do. I remember having this difficulty.
It, it has been confusing every year.
Yeah, I understand that we always overestimate because we don't want to miss out.
Right.
It just seems this, maybe we'll blame it on Zoom, that I'm just having a problem reconciling the information in front of me. But, but in the end, it's about a number, right, which is nine thousand, nine million, three hundred and seventy seven thousand, three hundred and three dollars is what Michael had.
Correct. Yeah.
So if there were a third, a fourth line, it would, that would be nestled between, or fo- four lines total, that would be nestled between the twenty five point two seven and the thirty point four nine.
Correct.
Right, right.
Trying to.
Well, I will say.
You got it. You nailed it, Meredith.
It would have been easier if this had, if this, if this secondary information had come out sooner, because then we could have called Katie up individually and pestered her.
Okay. Sometimes I, I only receive the, I only receive. Oh, I see the secondary information. Okay, okay. The worksheet's okay though, right? The worksheet is okay, okay.
Right.
Um, just needed it, the change would have been nice to have reviewed earlier. Okay, I got you.
I appreciate Michael's effort, though, that certainly would help potentially, potentially keep somebody from contacting us or put it more in comparison to the other units that are probably about that, that same rate.
Yeah.
Percentage, sorry.
So I make a motion.
Yay.
I'm glad you're doing it, kid.
Okay. Uh, I move to a resolution twenty twenty dash ten determining the amounts estimated to be necessary for the twenty twenty levy payable in two thousand, twenty twenty one upon taxable property is nine million, three hundred and seventy seven dollars. Sorry, nine million, three hundred and seventy seven thousand, three hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Great. That's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or questions? And here, hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Uh, LaShonda.
Aye.
Uh, Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, and so we have approved that resolution. And so now uh, Katie can get started uh, developing our black box advertisement.
Thank you all.
And and thank you all for your forbearance, and I apologize that the, that I had, had that click in my head uh, so, so late in the game today. And that takes us now to item C, uh, per, review of the preliminary uh, twenty twenty one capital improvement budget.
I am pulling up our draft two thousand twenty one uh, capital budget. Um, as Tim noted in his uh, report tonight, our capital uh, staff team have met a number of times in the last few months to review um, our prioritized list of uh, capital projects, um, developing and updating our five-year capital plan, as well as drafting uh, what we have tonight for the board uh, just as a review item. And that's our draft two thousand and twenty one capital improvement uh, budget. We had this presented to the finance study uh, group as well a couple of weeks back. Um, and tonight's really just uh, for your information purposes only, uh, if you have any comments uh, or questions, um, or any um, items you'd want to bring up tonight, uh, would be a great opportunity to do so. And at November, we'll have the uh, final version of the twenty one capital uh, budget for your approval. So I'm uh, hoping everyone can see uh, my screen at the moment. Um, you can see the full uh, draft budget that's also attached to the memo. Uh, you'll see our revenues of nine hundred and twenty eight thousand, nine hundred and five dollars uh, with that bond sale amount that Katie had uh, shown earlier in the meeting as well, eight hundred and fifty one thousand, nine hundred and five dollars uh, for next year. In our kind of main body expenditure section, um, you'll see a lot of the uh, usual lines that we have uh, each and every year. Um, tributes and donations, the cost of issue, um, or hazard, hazard tree work. Um, some lines I'll call some more attention to. One of those is the vehicles and equipment line. Uh, you'll see we have two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Set aside for uh, that specific line, and that's for the uh, replacement of our garbage truck. Uh, two of our full-time staff, three-quarter ton trucks, uh, wide area mower and uh, the replacement of our gator utility uh, vehicle. Uh, moving down the list, our hazard tree work, it's a normal amount, ten thousand dollars. Uh, construction crew projects of ten thousand, uh, technology operations, recreation, small equipment and uh, mechanical replacement. Once we start getting into the trails uh, projects, uh, you start to see where we have uh, certain areas allocated to uh, usually a specific project that we're gearing up for uh, in each capital year. With two thousand twenty one, um, it's uh, to start putting funds together for our Blair Ozlad project. Uh, we did have some money set aside in two thousand twenty uh, capital um, as well. And in this budget, you'll see it in the uh, trails uh, projects, the ADA uh, portion towards the bottom here. Uh, we usually get about fifty five thousand dollars of that sixty five thousand that can go towards capital uh, expenditures, and that would be going towards that Blair Ozlad uh, project. Um, also with the um, contingency that's remaining um, the bottom line in the main body here. Um, we have eighty five thousand dollars of that, that will go to Blair, and then the rest will remain um, for general contingency, which amounts to about fifty five uh, thousand.
Can you talk about the tennis at Blair?
Yep, I'm heading there right now. Um, hardscapes and fencing, um, we started doing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, last year as part of the strategic plan, um, taking care of things um, that we have. It was one of our um, goals that was brought up in discussions with our operations supervisors. Um, so what we have planned for two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two is to set aside one hundred thousand dollars um, from this line uh, for those two years, so that in two thousand and twenty two, we could do um, Blair tennis court, um, crack uh, ceiling and then recoloring and fencing of all the tennis courts at at Blair. And so that would also leave fifty thousand dollars in that for both uh, years for general hardscapes and fencing needs in the district. Uh, but we're, we're thinking we'll need to kind of put two years together in order to get enough funds on hand based on uh, some quotes we had recently received to do that work.
Could we anticipate any help from the school district?
I don't believe we've gotten that impression at this point.
Nancy, we're going to meet with the staff Friday, so we'll have that discussion. We will also discuss uh, any commitments to the baseball field at Prairie. They kind of rule our athletic um, items sort of together in that discussion, just to have that talk. Uh, I'm sure, you know, everybody's tight, but planning ahead is probably our best bet.
Right. And I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to have the school district using those. I don't mind sharing them, but I think a little sharing of the expenses is not because they don't contribute anything, right? They just use it. Right? They don't like, they don't mow the prairie, do they? Do they do?
I would ask Corky if he knows of any other services they've done.
Uh, well, that first, they did help us uh, do the crack reseal and coating last time, which was about ten years ago, eleven years ago. Um, so they did help with the expenses at that point. And they do help pay for small, um, well, I'd say very small amounts of money, but they do dedicate some funds towards, I mean, getting the ball field ready at Prairie. Um, but besides that, um, they did put the scoreboard in at the hardball field. Their boosters club paid for that. Um, the school basically was in charge of getting the dugouts at Prairie built for.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, there's been uh, that sharing of opportunities, I guess, but uh,
Has been some contribution.
This biggest scale, no, they haven't done a whole lot from that, that scale of things.
Yeah, okay.
Tim, is there any possibility that a donor might uh, or donors might uh, uh, make the ceiling of the cracks not necessary in terms of, in terms of the court?
Yes, we are working with some interested donors, um, on potential um, funds which might give way to naming opportunities of some of the courts. Obviously, we, we're kind of working through the, the budget part right now, getting with the school district. Then our plan was to get back with the donor group. Once we knew if the school district was going to contribute, that would certainly impact the amount of money needed to fundraise. So that was the idea to loop back and see if we could get any more of, of the tennis courts with that, that tennis-related facility, um, supported by donors.
Okay.
I think, I think we'll get some support. We're just not sure if we can get all of it or to what level.
Okay.
In, in, in gross numbers, the cost to repaint and crack fill is about a hundred thousand dollars. The, the cost to replace the fencing is about a hundred thousand dollars. That's what we currently have covered in our own budget. We're hoping the school district might come up with half of that. Um, we'll, we'll see. Um, and then your question, Roger, in terms of not needing to do crack fill, the cost to come in and mill uh, the old app filled up and replace it, effectively get rid of the cracks is an, is an additional two hundred thousand, and that, that's what, that's our challenge for, for our fundraisers and, and uh, that would roughly be half the cost to make the courts entirely new, uh, new paint, uh, new fencing and to mill and resurface.
Okay.
I've seen a lot of activity there. Do you feel like there's an uptick in tennis?
I think there is. It's, you know, one of the things you can do these days, and I think that certainly could lead to more interest in playing. I would also add, I strongly, and you've heard me say it before, we really need to limit the number of tennis courts we have in the district. There, you know, unless they're really being maxed out, they're very costly to maintain.
But the Blair courts this summer have been packed.
Yes, I've been driving by. I've seen a lot of acti- uh, activity there.
I think we, uh, just while we're on tennis, you know, a couple of years ago when we redid the ones at Victory, it was prob- probably several, several years ago, but that's always a high-end expense, and you don't get the same kind of use at a site like that. So, and it's not like you can just not improve them, you know, they're not safe to play if they're not in good condition. So again, I think limiting that, where we put tennis or amenities like that, that really cost would probably be wise.
Do people play pickleball outdoors or is that completely indoors?
They play outdoors. One of the things we're working on is getting some lines on the um, north or the south courts. The challenge is making sure you don't, the lines don't interfere.
Right. But I was thinking about putting it at Victory because that's, I mean, that's, um, you could always redirect folks and say, well, you know, if you don't want to play, if it's, if it's busy at Blair, which is everybody's first idea, I think. Just remind them that they've got, that we've got, um, spaced at, um, at Victory. And that would, that would put some adi- additional use.
The people that use our, I, I agree, having one court's better than no courts, but um, the people that utilize Brookins in the fall, winter months, the, they would like to see all three of the south courts as pickleball courts.
It's kind of social activity, right, Corky?
Yes.
We also occasionally hear that it's difficult to play out outdoors because it's windy and the ball tends to, to blow around quite a bit, so.
Yeah.
Seems like it also varies community by community. I know a few years ago when we were at the NRPA conference, a lot of the St. Louis parks were converting tennis over to pickleball. They had so many people interested in that. I don't think we seem to have that kind of level of interest in outdoor pickleball.
Okay, um, I can move uh, down the list of the expenditures here. Um, we have our twenty thousand UIC capital improvements. It's a yearly line that you'll see each year. Uh, CLP phased rehab of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is something that we've uh, begun putting in, I think in two thousand and nineteen, and uh, will continue to do so for the next uh, year or two. Um, this year, they one hundred and fifty thousand dollars were um, planning to use a portion of that for the ITAP uh, application, um, the Broadway project that would then connect um, the ITAP uh, Park Street path uh, over the saline with the pedestrian bridge uh, onto the multi-use path that goes up north Broadway towards the pool. And then um, additional funds from that line would be used for uh, lighting improvements uh, within Crystal Lake Park. Uh, two thousand twenty one capital, you'll see that we have um, our first budgeted um, amount for the uh, preliminary planning for the replacement of Prairie Play Structure at Meadowbrook Park. Um, currently, we have that scheduled uh, for replacement in two thousand and twenty three. Uh, so next year, we'll have some money set aside to begin uh, to do some uh, higher level um, design um, in advance of that uh, upcoming project. Uh, PRC roof repair, um, we're setting aside fifty thousand dollars. Um, there was a recent hailstorm like, two months ago, maybe two or three months ago. Um, we've had some damage on our uh, roof at Phillips. Um, insurance carriers currently evaluating our, our claim. Um, we believe it will get a uh, shingle, full shingle replacement um, at Phillips. Um, but we want to have some money uh, available for any um, repairs that are going to be needed that would be outside of that insurance claim, uh, as well if we have any sort of architectural uh, services that are going to be needed to uh, help us evaluate um, other improvements that we can have uh, with that roof while we're getting a uh, replacement, hopefully next year. Um, last thing is just those Blair project lines I kind of went over uh, before, the contingency for Blair Park and the ADA amount, uh, that'll probably end up being around fifty five uh, thousand dollars. And so two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, um, total funds that we have going towards that Blair project amount to four hundred and twenty five uh, thousand dollars. And then the four hundred thousand dollar grant from the state um, gives us eight hundred and twenty five thousand uh, total for that project uh, budgeted at this point. Um, so like I, you know, said in the beginning, this, this isn't uh, an action item for tonight. It's just for uh, your information and comment or questions, and we'll have it um, at the November board meeting as well for the final um, approval.
Are there any further questions on the uh, proposed capital improvement budget or this draft version? I mean, it will certainly be uh, modified um, in uh, in the coming months. Okay, then I think we're ready to move on to uh, action on our personnel policy manual. Okay, then I think we're ready to move on to action on our personnel policy manual.
I can speak to this item. In March, at the very beginning of the coronavirus pandemic, the board approved a resolution or a change, a temporary change to our personnel policy to allow acute illness leave to be used outside of some of its current restrictions that are defined in our personnel manual. So right now, without this change, temporary change, employee has to be out of the office for consecutive five days with a doctor's note or they have to be on FMLA leave basically in order to use acute illness leave. Back with the H1N1 pandemic, the board, or I don't know if that was a pandemic, but the H1N1 flu that happened, I don't know, 10 or years ago or so, the board approved a similar temporary change to that we modeled this one after that allowed the use of acute illness and thereby it kept staff out of the office and kept them from spreading disease. So that was the point of, of the change and it's worked really well. And since we passed this change, since the board allowed this change, the federal government has now also come in and said that we are required to provide two different types of leave to employees. One's called emergency paid sick leave and another one's called emergency FMLA leave. And both of those are related to coronavirus and they allow different levels of usage, either 100% for up to two weeks or 80% for up to six weeks. And based on the scenario, there's like a bunch of different scenarios if you're caring for someone with coronavirus versus if you have it yourself, et cetera, et cetera. But this acute illness leave policy allows an employee to supplement that, that if, for example, they only receive the 80%. And there also might be some other scenarios that don't fit into those federal, those six federal categories that our policy is flexible enough to allow them to use acute. For example, if they got a coronavirus test, but they don't have symptoms, but they have to stay and await results and they're unable to work from home, then they would be eligible if they're waiting for results from a coronavirus test. So there's different scenarios that it's still helpful for an employee to be able to utilize the acute illness policy that the board modified. And we were hoping that the board would be willing to make it retroactive to the date it expired and extend it for another six months while we evaluate.
Were there any questions about this?
I move that we extend the temporary adjustment to the personnel, personnel policy manual regarding eligible uses of acute illness leave.
And are we putting it, are we putting a date on that of March 8, 2021? Can, can you include that in your motion?
Yeah, extend this to the 28th of March, 28th of March, 2021.
Second. And the second is okay with that modification as well. Okay. That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, and we need to do a roll call vote again, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Ashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously.
I just have a quick question. So the election judge that tested positive for COVID at Brookings, did that affect the park district at all in the gym?
No, it didn't affect us. They did come in and we seen they came in and cleaned up, cleaned up afterwards. Closed it down, cleaned up, but again, the county is responsible for taking care of the gym. We don't have anything happen in there besides the election.
Hey, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, ready to move on now to ordinance 2020-09 authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property.
I think in my memo, I provided the background and sort of the history on the sculpture here and there. It's been a piece that we've, while we've had it, we've enjoyed it. But in efforts to try to reconnect with the artist to send it back, we have not been able to do so. We've done considerable tracking, calling. When I visited this studio in Chicago, I've asked numerous times about the artist, where her whereabouts are, and nobody has any information. We did work with Matt Dearing and he found a locating service that did provide an address to her. And we did send the information with receipt, postal receipt, still no follow-up. And so I think we're at this point now where we're recommending that if the board would approve the disposal of it, basically we would donate it to the Peoria Park District. They are starting a sculpture park in Peoria. I think they've been over to Urbana. We've visited a number of times. They've seen the piece. And their plan is, I just spoke to their director, Emily Cahill, last week. I think they're still interested. They would propose that they would move the piece. They have a very reputable mover that could come and get it, take it and would relieve us of care and owning and managing of that piece. You know, one of the things we want to do is to avoid abandoned pieces. It does happen. Every park probably has some incident of that. But the real goal would be to try to minimize your outlay so you don't have capital improvement repairs or any other costly elements there. We have not done it this way in the past. In fact, we've only had really one other piece that we that was unclaimed that we had to destroy because it was falling apart. But again, it does happen and thought this would be a way to sort of pass a piece along, help a new group that is eager to have it. And they would be responsible for it and that would open up our spot and we could obviously fill that space with, with some new work. And I lastly, I wouldn't assume or propose this would likely happen again. You know, it's to no one's fault except the artist. Certainly the value of it, at least at the time we received it, the insured value is fairly low. I'm not sure, you know, if it's even worth that amount today. But certainly looking at future repairs or moving it to another location, we would incur cost. So I think the recommendation is if it was declared surplus, we would be able to donate it, assuming they'd be willing to, you know, take it, relieve us and they would take ownership. I thought of other potential options, you know, sort of on a loan or whatever, but that would ultimately mean we own it. We would have responsibilities and this seemed to be a cleaner break. So again, the intent was always to return it to the artist in, in a way to avoid any of, any of this sort of approach. But as a last resort, I think we need to look at our bottom line and make sure that you know, we have the best options for new artwork. And again, Pure is excited about it. I think they would do any repairs or any other, you know, remediation that would be needed and take it from there.
Sounds like a plan.
I like this approach. So I move to donate the sculpture here and there to Peoria Park District.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions on this point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Ashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously. Now moves us to item F, action to approve resolution 2020-09 for making an Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program application for the Broadway Avenue path.
So when we previously applied for and received a grant to do the Park Street ITAP path, we had the foresight to do the preliminary engineering for the section that goes from the corner of Park and Broadway up to the saline, the section that Andy referenced in his capital review budget. We did that in part because we thought it would help give us a leg up with the future application, but also because we were aware there'd be some challenges in that section that might require some accommodations by IDOT in order for that path to go in. And so that pre-engineering work was done. And now that the grant is reopened, we're poised to apply. It will certainly give us a leg up. There's also enhanced interest in doing more bike and ped projects with this round of ITAPs. So that will help us as well. And in Karen's email, she noted that the local match, the minimum is 20, I'm sorry, the maximum is 20%. It's possible we may qualify for a 10% or a 0% local match based upon our community score. And based upon some of the numbers that we've been looking at, we think there's a decent chance we may come in below that 20% threshold. We, we went ahead and protected the 20% local match. You know, we, we did approach Carl to see if they'd be interested in being our local match again. And there wasn't support for it at this time. They cited a number of other projects are supporting us on and like they're, they're pretty tapped on those. So the return to the district would be considerable. You know, we'd be looking at a, up to 170% local match of a project that would cost 852,000. So we'd be bringing back nearly 700,000, $700,000 in grant funds to, to the district if we're successful in this grant application. We've begun asking for letters of support already. I think the folks that we've talked to include Carl, a couple of our local legislators, Mayor Urbana, some of the different committees that are involved in trail projects. And we've also been talking with regional planning and they're going to help us review our application. They feel like it's a strong application. The last thing I wanted to do is to show you all the actual paths, you get a sense of what we're talking about. This is, you all see that? Okay. The yellow is the, is the path. And so again, it will go from the corner of Park and Broadway all the way up to the saline. And it does include a pedestrian bridge, which is frankly why, why it's a more expensive project than the previous path project. Shorter in length, but includes a bridge crossing there at the saline. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the, the project, the grant application and our recommendation to approve the resolution.
I move we approve resolution 20, are we done? Can I do this?
Yes.
Okay. 2020-09 allowing staff to submit a grant application for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program for the Broadway Avenue Multi-Use Path and Pedestrian Bridge Project in Crystal Lake Park.
That's been moved and seconded. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Ashonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote affirmative as well, and so that carries unanimously and we can proceed with the application.
I might just part with a couple of nice photos of the path that went in. This is the corner over by the hospital showing nice fall color. This is the path being used and some of the stone outcropping that we're now using the lake project. So I'm really excited to wrap this project up and hopefully we'll be successful on our grant application.
Yes, indeed.
Well, it would be a great enhancement to link up from the ITAP project on the south end of the park and the new path work that was done to the, in the north end along Broadway. So it's a, a great win if we can get that grant.
I would add too, the bridge over the saline is, would make a much safer, much more enjoyable, you know, experience. Right now, people have to hop out on the road bridge, go around it to get back on, you know, to the north trail.
We run the turkey trot entirely in the park.
And I would add, after the one-way road is put in, you'd have a complete loop that would essentially loop all over the southern end of the park.
A great enhancement to that part. Moving on now, we had no new business removed from the consent agenda. So we have come to the comments from commissioners portion of our agenda. Any commissioners wishing to make comments? My goodness. Truly done. Okay, with nobody coming forward with that, then I believe we have exhausted our agenda for the evening. And I will declare us adjourned and thank you all for zooming in this evening.